Call the meeting to order. It's the fourteenth of May. Monongahy County Commission is now in session. I ask that you please rise for a moment of silent meditation and remain standing for the question.
(inaudible)
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 Diane.
We have a lot of approvals today. There are no exonerations. There are no fiduciary matters. There are no minutes. We have General County Clinic expenditures, fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, seventy-seven cents. General County key card, three thousand, six, seventeen, fifty-seven. Full severance fund, eight thousand, six, ninety-five, fifteen. Kemp monthly, seven thousand, two, forty-three, oh, five. Tresmet Ridge Park, four thousand, one, thirty-nine, twelve. Mason Dixon Park, two, eighty-eight, eighteen. Mason Dixon Park key card, one, thirteen, oh, eight. Assessor's valuation fund, two, sixteen, forty-five. General School Fund, eleven thousand, one, twenty. Nine-one-one Cash Fund, twelve thousand, three, fifty-six, thirty-nine. Law Enforcement, forfeiture, six hundred and sixty, twenty-four. A total of one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. I have a one budget revision. It's twenty thousand dollars for federal grants for equipment.
Move for approval. I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Renetta.
So, for your approval today, I have some DUI grants and emergency preparedness grant, request for reimbursement. First is the emergency preparedness grant for the West Virginia Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety Homeland Security. This is a conjunction with the Monongahy County Health Department for the month of April two thousand and fourteen, seven thousand, four, thirty-two, twenty. We have DUI grant for the Governor's Highway Safety Program for the month of April two thousand and fourteen, eleven thousand, six, eighty-one, ninety-two. Crash data retrieval, equipment purchase for the DUI grant, two thousand and eight, twenty-four. And the clicker or ticket portion of the DUI grant, two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents.
Move for approval. I have a motion for approval and I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Kelly Palmer. Is she out there?
Sheriff's looking for her.
Oh, yes. Has he got a warrant out or is he just?[212.51][212.51](laughing) Okay. Well, we're in a little bit ahead of schedule. We can probably go ahead and do the resolution on the carry. Because that doesn't. If you don't mind, we'll go ahead and take you a little bit early here.
(inaudible) A little concerned we could put right after the delinquent list.[243.12][243.12](laughing) I'm Tom Witt and I'm a member of the AARP Advocacy Team in the state of West Virginia. And I'm joined today by three members of AARP West Virginia. Rich Stonestreet is our president. Gayling Miller is our state director. And Angela Vance is our associate state director. And I'd like Angela to come up and talk to you a little bit about what's included in the resolution, which is an important issue, very dear and dear to me and I know to the commission and the citizens of Monongahy County.
Sure.
Angela.
Thank you so much again. I'm Angela Vance with AARP. And we really appreciate you having us here today and acknowledging family caregivers. We're working at the state level, at the county level, and down to the city level. If you haven't been a caregiver yet in your lifetime, or you haven't known one, you're probably going to. You know, our population is continuing to age. We did a survey recently of individuals forty-five and older in West Virginia. And as you might imagine, over ninety percent of us want to live at home throughout our lives. And in order to do that, we're going to need caregivers. Most of those caregivers are going to be unpaid family caregivers. And so, it's in everyone's best interest as taxpayers that we work to ensure that those caregivers have everything that they need so that they can keep their family or their friend at home where it's much less expensive to give them services. So, we've worked with the state legislature to change laws, to give them more skilled training so that they can do things at home. Of course, we constantly work to make sure that there's plenty of home and community-based services available to folks. And so, we just appreciate this opportunity to continue to raise awareness about this issue. And we look forward to working with you in the future to support individuals who live in Monongahy County. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to read the resolution?
Oh, sure. Okay.
We like it red because the cameras, you know, the people can hear it.
Perfect. Be it resolved by the County Commission of Monongahy County, whereas the population of individuals sixty-five and older will increase by more than a third between 2010 and 2020, going from less than three hundred thousand to more than four hundred and five thousand people. And whereas nationally, seventy percent of people with Alzheimer's disease or related disorders live at home and need assistance with activities of daily living. And whereas almost three-fourths of older people living in the community who receive personal assistance rely exclusively on unpaid caregivers for help. And whereas ninety-two percent of West Virginians forty-five plus said that they preferred to be at home with assistance remaining in their communities. Whereas providing services and supports to older adults in their homes and communities is generally much less expensive than nursing home care. Whereas older adults who receive cost-effective services in their homes are much less likely to need public assistance. Whereas an estimated seventy-one percent of West Virginians currently or previously have provided care for a family member or friend, which equates to an estimated two-hundred and ninety million hours a year and an estimated value of two point eight million dollars each year. And whereas to successfully address the surging population of older adults who have significant needs for long-term services and supports, the county may consider developing methods to both encourage and support families to support their aging relatives and develop ways to recruit and retain qualified, responsive in-home care workforce. Be it resolved that the County Commission of Monongahy County supports the dedicated work of family caregivers in Monongahy County and will continue to seek additional ways to support these individuals through information, education, training, and relief care, recognizes caregiving for older adults as a vital and needed profession today and in the future, and strongly encourages additional innovative and creative means to support family caregivers to continue to provide needed in-home support for older adults, dated May fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Move to approve the resolution. Is she ready? I have a motion for approval and I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, may we have a photo with you all?
We'd love to have a photo.
Okay, in response to the resolution?
Sure. I would like to say before we take the photo that this truly is one of the essential roles of government, taking care of the young and the elderly. We can measure our community and our society by the way we do that. And staying in home, in the home, in their own home, anything we could do, I think that's a central role of government. And I applaud you all for the work you do.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you to stand right here. Yeah. I'll just stand up here behind you. If you would, you can just sort of stand here and we'll stand up here.
Sign it afterwards.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Sure. Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate your work. You can get up there and we'll do them all. We got a routine here. Over this way a little bit. Yeah.
You know how to do it.
Yeah. You move better. All you need is my head, you don't need my belly.[632.79][632.79](laughing) I'm trying to hide mine too. Ready? About work. Take another one, just do a dance.
Excellent.
Let me get one too.
Thank you.
For our county. Like to keep them for our county records. Good. That's what I'm used to hearing that click.[663.12][663.12](laughing) That's how it works.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thanks again.
Thank you. We'll sign this and Diane will get it too. Okay.
Thank you. I'm Gayling.
Diane, tone this aside. Okay. Ten fifteen, we got about three minutes. I saw Kelly out in the hallway. I guess the sheriff executed his warrant on her.[719.54][719.54](laughing) Sheriff, were we able to locate our tax director there? We have the list, the small list. Whoa. The small list. All those people are delinquent?
Yes, sir.
That's not one question per page, is it? I was afraid of that.[745.82][745.82](laughing)
No, it's just lines because this list has the descriptions and everything on it too. That's why.
How many people per page? How many?
Probably.
Do you know offhand how many delinquent taxpayers we have?
I don't know the number, but I can give you the amount.
How much is it?
For real estate, it is about four point four eight million dollars.
Oh, my.
And for personal, it's one point six.
Are we doing anything in regards to that at this point? The sheriff is. Are we, Sheriff? What we do every year on the personal property, delinquents and stuff, we have the assistant prosecuting attorney send letters to them. What we haven't done, we've consulted with commissioners before, what we haven't done is actually go on the next step to file civil suits against them. But prompting a lot of people to come in and pay those taxes, they do once they get the letter from Filmer. We have not taken the other step because the commission has looked at what's involved. Once everything's done and people come in and pay, how much is left over on the delinquent list. And then you have to also realize that there are some people that have been deceased. Yeah, the state, there's nothing. And so, we would have to do a lot of checking on those to make sure, you know, who's still here and then follow up with a civil suit. Of course, on the real estate, we take care of that every year in November with the. Sales, auction. Now, is this, how many years does this go back? Is this just one year? This is just two thousand and thirteen. Is there a limit of when? I mean, does it ever? If you've gone to the rear edge on personal taxes, is there a limit, like statute limits that you can only go back to two thousand and twelve or no?
And that's what, and we collect on it every year. And what the sheriff is saying is he just has not done that last step, which is confiscation of property.
Okay. Maybe what we, maybe what I would suggest, if it's all right with you, Sheriff, would be that we should set, look at, back at some of the older years, see how many we've got in some of the older years, and sort of examine, sort of do a cost-benefit analysis of how much is there, how much it would cost to execute or seek a civil remedy to collect it, and decide whether it's bad debt and just should be written off or it's, or it can be pursued on. Because there might be, there might be some, you don't know. There might be some that could be pursued on. There might, we might have some tax revolutionists here in the county. I'm saying that just refuse to pay taxes, but they have the money to do it. I don't know if that's the case. I'm just saying that maybe we ought to put a, put some sort of system or program in that we all are together on and say, okay, we're gonna, after three years or four years or whatever, I'm just making, throwing numbers out there, that we're going to break down the list, look at the estates, the different issues, you all know better than I do, and then we're gonna proceed on these and we're gonna pass those by. That's just an idea. You know, the other thing, and I don't know if it's ever been explored, but for us to look to contracting out collection, just simply because of the amount of workload that's involved, I mean, for your office to go through and follow up and pursue and do all that would require a great deal of time where there may be someone out there that would contract doing that on a percentage basis of the amount of collections that came back to the county. I don't know if we can do that or not, but it might be worth looking at. Or sell it. I wonder if we can sell it for fifty cents on a dollar and let someone else collect. But there's a lot of. I don't know. That might be against the law. I'm just throwing out ideas. There's a lot of debt collectors out there that will get on the phone to you if you don't pay your bills, but. Now, on real estate, we have that remedy. Oh, yeah. You have that already dealt in, yeah. On personal, we would have to do the civil suit. Can we legitimately remove a delinquent on the personal property if the person's deceased? I mean, do we have to keep carrying them or?
No, we don't.
Okay.
And they're classified as uncollectible. And this is just the May, the May tenth publication list, which we kind of view it as more just a, this is a reminder that further action will be taken in September and October. So, actually, this is kind of a reminder to everybody that their thirteens are still delinquent. The numbers are pretty close to what they were last year.
Well, that was my next question, whether this was up from.
It's not, not too much. In two thousand and twelve, the real estate was three point seven. The personal was one point four. I mean, that's only a two hundred thousand dollar difference. I do want to note that the exonerations, which are taxes removed from the books, this year there was only a half a million dollars removed from the books.
Well, that's great.
So, the Assessor's Office is doing a great job with that. Prior year was one point three million. So, this is, and I do just need you to accept that.
Okay. It may be a problem, doesn't need a solution. There might be a solution out there. I would just throw those ideas out as possible. And those are always things that we can look at. And we'll obviously look at it at the end of the tax year when we see how many people are paid. And Kelly is exactly right. Normally, what you see there, I would say, what, seventy-five, eighty percent of those are going to be paid. So, we're looking at the two thousand and twelve, you only have like twenty percent of that amount that's, so that's what we're dealing with. And that's all personal profit. Right. Yes, I understand. It's all personal. And move for acceptance? Move to accept the delinquent list as presented? I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you all for your work. Okay. Tom, no, wait a minute. Public hearing for Little Creek Public Service District Boundary Adjustments. Scheduled for ten thirty. Oh, I thought it was ten fifteen. No, ten thirty. Okay, we still have ten minutes then. Huh? How about, let's go to correspondence.
We'll have one letter.
Only one letter? One letter.
This is from the sheriff. Please find enclosed a copy of the check in the amount of one thousand, three hundred twenty dollars and twenty-five cents from the city of Morgantown for the February two thousand and fourteen jail billing, eight hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-five cents, and the purchase of Apollo, five hundred dollars. At this time, I'm requesting that the purchase price for Apollo, five hundred dollars, be deposited back into the forfeiture account since this account is where he was purchased from in the first place. The remainder of the check, eight hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-five cents for jail billing can be deposited into the general county fund. That's just for your.
Okay, so, do we need, do we vote on this or do you have to do a?
Yeah, I'll have to do a budget revision to increase the receipts and put it into the proper.
Okay. Can we vote on it before you write it up or can we vote on it right now?
Yes, yes.
We can?
Yes.
Okay, so, state again what the request is.
I is requesting the purchase price of five hundred dollars be deposited back into the forfeiture account and the remainder of eight hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-five cents for jail billing be deposited into the general county fund.
Okay. I move that we, from those funds, we return the five hundred dollars to the forfeiture account and the balance to the general fund. I second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Any other correspondence?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Unfinished business. Approval of form authorizing salary increase for elected officials.
That's the form that was prescribed by the auditor's office. Renetta put in all the financial information and this needs to be signed by the commission so we can submit this to the auditor. This is to verify that we have sufficient funds in our budget to allow for the increases for elected officials July one.
You want us to sign that now? We've already approved that, right?
Yes.
We have a copy.
The actual form to be approved.
Oh, we've already approved it? Yeah, approved it last Wednesday.
Approved, filling out the form. This is just.
Oh, yeah.
They completed. Just needs to be signed by the turn into the auditor.
We didn't have the numbers last week though, did we? Did we? Oh, no, no, no.
We just had the form.
Can I see the numbers? I'm curious. I'd like to be able to compare it to what other counties are facing. It's only a fifty-two thousand dollar increase. That isn't much when you consider our budget.
Yeah.
I don't count him in. But it means a lot to elected officials that haven't got a raise for, what, ten years or?
Eight.
Eight years. Long time. Now, that's, that was financial statement. That looks, that looks good. Very good. Anything else? We still have seven minutes. Anything, county commissioners? Do you have anything? A couple of things. I just wanted to touch on, I have talked with Jeff McCorsky and the armory sale's gone through, so our payment, the second payment will be on time. He informed me. And so, we'll be able to make the second payment to the DOH. I'm pleased with that. I also, last week, went to the Region Six with Mayor Celine. And I meant to bring the papers in with me, but I don't have them right now. The one-stop, Region Six workforce is, has adopted a one-stop program. So, basically, all the various nonprofits and agencies that's working on developing the workforce, they work together. The, whether you're Native American, or you're disabled, or your factory or workplace shut down, displaced workers, whatever, you know, young teen workers, all of them is a one-stop, one-stop program. So, if you go in and you don't have to, you can fill in the information with one person. You don't have to go here for this and here for that. We don't send people around. And I think it's a great concept, and a concept that we were informed was, has been working very well and sort of ahead, ahead of the rest of the state and the other states as well. So, Mayor Celine and I went down. I was kind of disappointed because they invited representatives from every county and all the legislators. And it's, what, a seven or, seven or ten county region, Region Six, I forget. But Mayor Celine and I were the only ones that showed up. And that was, that was kind of sad because everyone talks about business development and they want to spend money on promoting business and all. People, people need workers. They gotta, they gotta have a training workforce. And these are programs for a trained workforce. And I know counties, a lot of the smaller counties, I've talked with county commissioners, I mean, that's what they keep talking about. We need, we need more economic development. We need more growth. We need, we need our tax base increased. Well, and for them to put together a program and invite fifty individuals, legislators and all, and only two people to show up from all those counties, I thought was kind of disappointing. That's sort of a positive thing with sort of a, sort of a shadowy thing. I was just kind of disappointed. But Monongahy County is moving ahead and strongly so. So, I'm feeling very positive about that. I also wanted to take, take a couple of minutes to this being my. Third, third or fourth? We had a lot of elections after I first got here. Third or fourth? We had a governor election every three months. I know. Yeah. This may have been my third or fourth election. We've only been here three years and we've had like four elections, four or five elections we've overseen. Yeah, five with the two primaries, yeah. That was about. I must commend our clerk, Carrie Blaney. She and her staff does an excellent job and she reflects a lot with the county and I'm so proud of all our departments, from the sheriff to the clerks and to our own staff. The creative way that we have worked, are working together to advance this county. The cliques, the cliques have virtually disappeared. We don't, we don't want them. We have no need for them. That makes some people mad, but you and I have worked hard to eliminate that. And we respect everybody. And her reaching out to Morgantown High School and I praise the coach, Coach Bowers. Talked to him last night. He hopes it's an ongoing thing. But I gotta praise all the football team and I gotta praise the clerk for coming up with that creative idea, a way that can help the community and involve the community in political activities. Now, the gray side of this is that I was extremely disappointed that out of fifty-eight thousand-plus registered voters, we had over eight thousand plus. That means over fifty thousand people in this county did not vote. And there was, the major election was the House of Delegates, of course, the school board as well, but the House of Delegates. And they talk and they get concerned about what's going on in Charleston, but you don't care enough to go find out what the issues are and select your representatives to go to Charleston. So, that's, that's the gray side of that and it's disappointing. But I just wanted to make those two observations and say that I believe that our county is showing the kind of leadership and strength and advancement that is, is talked about throughout the state. I know from the county commissioner that we are really moving ahead. So, I want to thank the commissioners as well. Commissioner Bartolo is our president. It's been a pleasure and a joy working with you for these three years. Thank you. It's been a mutual experience. Experience. You.
You stole my thunder. But I guess I just want to echo your comments in regards to the election. And I think probably what sums it up is the representative that was there at Election Central last night from the Secretary of State's office, who said that Monongah County is a model for the rest of the state on handling elections. And I think that speaks well of Carrie Blaney and her operations and her staff. It doesn't surprise me, because having been through some elections, I think an observer can easily draw the conclusions that she is well organized and planned and has the resources to do the job before the job ever becomes visible. And as we all know, that's the secret to getting the job done and getting it done well. And she certainly has done that over the last several elections. Every one that she's been involved in. And, you know, I need to make one other comment in terms of the Monongah County and leadership. And we're very fortunate in this county to have the elected officials that we have. We have probably one of the best sheriffs departments, if not the best sheriffs department operation in the state of West Virginia. We certainly have, coming on very strongly, an assessor's office that is reaching out to people and bringing our assessments and whatnot back in the line. We have a prosecutor's office that... You look at the last grand jury list, who does the job well, and staff has increased. You look at the circuit clerk's office with Jean Friend and the years that she's been involved in that office. Of course, we talk about Carrie Blaney. And, you know, we've probably said enough about that. But the judges, you know, we're fortunate to have the quality of judges that we have in Monongah County. Sometimes people can stand back and be critical of maybe shortfalls. But, you know, we all know who the only perfect person is in this world. And he's not in this world, so none of us are going to reach that... attain that level. So sure, we're... Robert F. Kennedy once said that to err is human and to move awkwardly is sometimes inevitable. And that's what we get for being fallible human beings. But we try to do the best job that we can do with what we have to do it with. But I just think that needs said, particularly in an election year. And hopefully, the people in this community will gather in a joint effort to get people out to vote come November. There's a lot of people that have put out a lot of effort and given their lives for that right. And there's an old saying that if you have a right to do something, you don't exercise it, you're going to lose it. And that's something that this country cannot afford to do, is to lose the right to vote. But having said that, I think we're now ready to go to a public hearing for Little Creek Public Service District boundary adjustments. And it's a revised boundary to begin at a point in the current Little Creek Public Service District boundary located along the southwestern side of the Monongah River, eight hundred thirty-seven feet northwest from the mouth of Joe's Run and Clinton District in Monongah County. Is the person... Is there a person here present that advocates this?
Kathy Dolman, Clinton Water Association, very willing to change the boundaries to Little Creek on behalf of the Water Association.
Okay. Anyone else to speak in favor of it? Anyone to speak in opposition to it? Any other comments regarding this endeavor? Being no further comments?
Do you need the motion to close the public hearing? Or do you just close the public hearing?
I was just going to close it.
Just close it then?
Being no further comments, I was going to close the public hearing.
Okay. Then if the public hearing's closed, I'll move that we revise the boundary as stated in the notice of public hearing to Little Creek Public Service District.
And I'll second it. In favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The only small problem that we had, the notice is supposed to be posted in five conspicuous areas throughout the boundary change, but other than the tri and community centers. And we posted it at the Clinton Water Association and Little Creek PSD. Those have been only three areas that we could find. Otherwise, it's just land, and there were no businesses. So I'll explain that in a letter to the Public Service Commission.
Okay.
So that's not a problem. Of course, there's four walls. You could have put on four different walls.
We have another public hearing scheduled for ten forty-five, so we can probably move on with some of the other agenda items. Reports from the elected officials. Mr. Sessor, any comment?
Yeah, I mean... Just a reminder, next week is our Assessor's State Conference. It's being held here in Monongah County, so we'll be at Lakeview where the host county this year. Secondly, what I wanted to get to was through our education forms that we've been doing, I wanted to give out thanks to the sheriff and to Carrie from the clerk's office for letting us utilize some of their equipment, which helped get us to the PowerPoint that Chuck put together for us. So I want to make sure that I toss that out to them. I'm very appreciative. For our conference next weekend, and I'm thanking the commission too, Longfien, for this... For your support on this, we wanted to give a token to the attendees coming in. We attended our first one last year in Ohio County, and they gave out a little thing from their office to those. And I thought that was kind of nice. It was a little nice thing. And we were looking in Monongah County to try to do something above that, in a sense. And I had one of my staff, Jan Solom, did some research for me, for people in this county. And she came across a young lady that is one of the... Voted one of the top three artists in the state of West Virginia. She has done work with Tamarack. Her stuff has been done on Tamarack. She's also been on QVC with her pottery. So she's become well-known, and she's in our own backyard. She's probably ten, fifteen minutes from here. And I asked Ms. Anna Brown to come in today, because the things that we were going back and forth on to give that token is stuff that she did for us. And if I could get Ms. Brown to stand up for a moment, just to recognize her for the work that she did for us. This is the pottery that she had made for us, so we'll be handing out. And from her to you all is a little token. Show her artwork.
Wow.
And the one unique thing about it is she grows her own plants and everything. So the imprints in here are actual plants that she grows, that she puts in.
You can eat all that.
That's wonderful.
We didn't put stickers on them because there's so many of them, but they are food safe, dishwasher safe, microwave. So you actually... I actually made those as the original dish, as a dessert dish. I thought each half would freeze with the real ice.
Yeah.
People... I do a bread plate that's long, so people start buying them as dipping dishes. So I do so many of those for different things. And I really appreciate the fact that I got to do them for the county commission. And I'm out in the country. And I don't want you folks to forget us folks out in the country. If you need something, just call them.
Move around, no, very good.
But I wanted to bring her in just to recognize her, because it was a lot of work that she did. And we... Chuck and I met with her a few times, get some things done. She's done real well with the correspondence with the ladies in the office and the folks. So we were excited about this, be able to hand out something that our own artwork from here. So just wanted to bring Ms. Brown.
I appreciate the... I appreciate the job.
Well, we appreciate your work.
And I appreciate that you didn't get it from China.
We all appreciate that.
You know, we often give certificates of appreciation, and I think this is a deserving certificate of appreciation. So I move that we give Ms. Brown a certificate of appreciation for the county commission for this block and for her service to the county.
I'll second it. In favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. You know what I had to do for QVC? I had to do nine hundred and fifty.
Oh, my.
So this was a piece of cake.
Well, we thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. That's very nice. Sheriff?
Very nice.
You have anything?
Just very quickly, we are working as hard as we can to hire more deputies. We will have new deputies starting, actually, this month. We'll bring them up next week. When I mention the last name, you'll probably say that sounds familiar. His last name is Coe, his first name is Jacob. And yes, he is the brother of Isaac and Aaron Coe, who are already two of our deputies. So we have three brothers. Jacob just... We actually stole him from Morgantown PD. He's been there for a couple of years, so he's already been through the academy, already had all the training that he had to do. He's completed his physical and psychological for us. We just got those results Monday. So everything is fine, and we'll bring him up next Wednesday to introduce him. At least we've made one stride towards getting those other three folks hired.
Does he have any other brother?
He does, they do.
Or sisters? Brothers or sisters?
He has a younger brother, who is eighteen or nineteen years old. I think we're going to wait a little bit. We don't want to rename the county.
That's correct. That's okay, it sounds good.
So... And obviously, I appreciate the work that Kelly does in the tax office in getting the delinquent list together. And her monthly financials are always accurate, and so we appreciate what her and her folks do in the tax office. I only have to echo what both of you said about the job that all the other elected officials do. We enjoy great working relationships with them. I know that anytime Mark comes and says, you know, hey, can you help me out with this? We're willing to do it. He does the same for us. And you'll notice in the numbers from last year, like Kelly said, in simply a year, there's been an eight hundred thousand dollar turnaround in the exonerations. And that, I think that says a lot to that leadership and the folks that he is. So we're real happy that we're in this county, enjoying these kinds of relationships.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Kelly, anything?
Yeah, mine today, thank you.
Got two more minutes. Any...
Diane, you have anything?
Say that we went to the mall on Saturday.
Oh, I forgot about that.
There were too many people there.
That's right. We never talked about that.
I didn't talk about the mall, that's right.
Yeah, you might want to mention that. That's the first time the event we ventured into at the mall. You want to explain what it was?
Well, we had a table set up with some brochures, some informational pages that people could pick up. But unfortunately, the traffic at the mall wasn't that great on Saturday. But were we there?
Well, we did have... After we decided to break up, we had the first person that gave us a lecture on... We were supposed to be there at a certain time, and when... Why we weren't, and we apologized, and I think she understood.
But Bill and I were still there.
Yeah, we were still there. We were... Actually, I was there until after four.
Yeah, she also lectured us on a couple of other things.
Yeah.
She came? She talked to you afterwards?
Right after you and Tom left, she came up to the table and said, where's your signs? Where's your brochures? She said, well, there was no traffic, so we decided to break up. You said four o'clock. There's supposed to be here for... So that was the first part of the lecture. Then she went on to a couple of other things. But she ended up, after getting lectures, praising the county and the whole thing.
Yes.
Jamie, anything?
Yes, sir.
Jamie, anything? Ben?
Yep.
How about Andrew? You got anything?
Andrew, anything from Channel Twelve?
No.
There's ten back there, too. WAJ, they always got something to say.
Chuck's back there, yeah. Chuck, you got something to say, Chuck?
Chuck.
Hey, Chuck.
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 Cliff.
Hey, Cliff.
He don't know his name, Chuck.
Hey, Cliff.
Come on, Cliff, they want to see you.
Hey, Cliff.
Okay, we can now move into the next public hearing. Small Cities Block Grant River Road Water Project. Purpose of the public hearing is allow citizens to comment on the proposed project prior to the passage of resolution authorizing the filing of the application. What we will do is sort of follow the same format. The person that... Any comments regarding the presentation of this?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Very good day.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Sheena Hunt. I'm with Region Six Planning Development Council, and we are located at thirty-four Mountain Park Drive in Whitehall, West Virginia. And we're here to present to you the application for the Small City Block Grant for the River Road PSD. And I do have a sign-in sheet that I need to pass around. Unfortunately, I've lost my pen. I don't know what happened to it, so if I could start up here with you?
Yep.
If you could just pass it all around, it's on here, I would appreciate that, please. And we do have a...
My parents.
We do have a couple of representatives here for the project, in case there are any questions. Dan Farrell, the engineer for the project, and Danny Wolf, a board member. I'm not sure if you have a title for your...
No, I'm just a board member.
Just a board member, okay. I'm just going to read a brief overview of the project, and then if you have any questions or the public has any questions or comments. The River Road Public Service District currently provides potable water service to approximately six hundred and twelve customers. The water for the PSD is purchased from Morgantown Utility Board, pumped to three water storage tanks. The proposed project will make improvements to the existing River Road PSD water distribution system. The improvements include the replacement of a water storage tank, installation of a control system to improve operation at the Hilda brand tank, upgrades to the existing booster station, and replacement of water lines in the Delmar, Booth, National, and Birchfield areas. The project will improve the operation of the system and reduce required maintenance. That's just a brief overview. If you have more in-depth questions, I'll defer to the board or the engineer.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of the project? Anyone want to speak in opposition to the project? Anyone with any questions regarding the project?
Yeah, I got a question. What's the overall cost of the project?
I believe it's three million, five hundred thousand dollars.
That's right.
And what do we hope to get grant-wise?
We're... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're going to apply for a one-point-five million dollar Small City Block Grant. I lost my page for the funding. And then two million dollars from West Virginia IJDC loans. Is that correct, Dan?
That's right.
Okay. One depends on the other.
Yes. We're in line as a second year. We've been in line for the Small Cities Block Grant, and it's kind of contingent on getting that grant before you can get the loan dollars.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But there's no question about the loan dollars.
Actually, loan dollars are getting tighter down there at the state. They replenish the bond every year. A lot of projects are down there fighting with a lot of competition. But for the grant, if we get that, then we'll use that to design it, then you'll be in position to move the project and say, we're ready to proceed. That's the way it works.
There we go.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have two sets of the documents. One is for you, but they do need signed, because it does require original signatures. And we have the application that we'll take back to the office with this. It'll need to be signed. And there's a few that will need to be attested as well.
Okay.
Does the board members, or any of them want to say anything?
I asked them, is there any comment?
No, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, sir.
I'm sorry.
Being no further comments, would entertain a motion for approval for submission.
I would move that we approve the Small City Block Grant application.
Second. Have a motion and a second. In favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, you need our signature.
Yes, sir.
All three, or just the...
This is your copy, to do at your leisure, but it would need to be sent in. And this is the one I need to take back with me. They're all flagged, and then if you could...
We have signed every place that there's a flag?
Yes. And then...
Oh, not all of us signed?
No, just...
No, no, just one, just yours, please. And then...
I'm very... I'm very getting annoyed here.
The sign-in sheet?
It's around.
It's around, okay. It's still going around, and I'll pick that up. And I have nothing else, and I will give you the sign-up, sir.
You have one you have to sign here?
I will.
No?
I will. Mine is finished.
Mine is finished.
You got Elton's name here.
Oh, that was a mistake of the secretary, if you could just mark it out, and write your name, that'd be fine, please. Sorry about that.
You change every year?
Yeah, it's one you didn't catch.
We can have him sign it, that's okay.
That's all right. That amount of money.
That you're responsible for.
At least I have a jail cell, pardon me. I need to sign this now. This is our.
That's our copy, that's our, you can sign it.
I can sign this anytime. Okay. Okay, comments from the public? Being no comments from the public, entertain the motion. Oh, Tom, you have any comments?
I just want to thank, last night was the first night I was at the election process, and I want to give kudos and congratulations to Carrie Blaney, did an exceptional job. I thought it was well-run, I think, you know, the information was out there real quickly, and I do want to congratulate her, and at the same time, I do want to say that I hope the constituents come out to vote at the regular election very disappointed with only a 13% turnout, and hopefully, we will be able to increase that turnout with a number of elections going on, and hopefully, we'll have more people to vote. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion adjourned and a second, on favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close. Motion carried. We are adjourned.